Welcome. Good evening, everyone. The meeting is called Order. Victoria, can you please call the roll call to establish form?
Member Vickers.
Here.
Member Perry.
Here.
Member Kelly.
Here.
Clerk Osborne.
Here.
President Normandin.
Here.
Thank you, Victoria. We're going to now move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Not sure which one of you want to lead this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Can I have a motion as second to adopt agenda?
Go move.
Second.
Thank you. Victoria, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Member Vickers.
Yeah.
Member Perry.
Yes.
Member Kelly.
Yes.
Clerk Osborne.
Yes.
President Normandin.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. We're now moving to item four A. Kelly, is there anyone wishing to speak on the review and discussion of the report, the facilities project? Might be the second one.
No.
Thank you, Kelly. With that, Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. With me tonight, I have Mr. Zeta, Director of Facilities and the Architect of Record, Roger Clark from Runa Runa Clark Architects. Tonight, we're going to do a workshop study session on the district office, but to give some context and some history on this, I think is important. With the development of the facilities master plan in 2014, we looked at all of our district-owned facilities, all schools, all district offices, all ancillary facilities. And with that, we developed the 10-year plan that looked at major modernization renovation projects, as well as our capital improvement program for improvements at all schools. At the same time, in 2015, we had a request for proposals for architectural services related to that master plan to look at the feasibility of some major projects that were in it that we had coming up. Examples include Thurston Field Project and Classroom, which is done here now, the high school stadium, top-of-the-world elementary classroom buildings, and the El Moro Science Classroom and Shade Structure Project, all of which were completed. There was an additional feasibility study at the district office done, which looked initially at what were the needs identified for the district? And how would that look transposed on the paper as far as a new building? And those plans were also part of what we had worked with, our new architect in development of this feasibility study. What I would like to emphasize to the board tonight before I turn it over to Mr. Zeta is what we're doing tonight is talking about deficiencies that aren't new and will be everyone will be familiar with. However, when we're looking at spatial analysis and the potential site layout, this is one of potentially many, many options. This is just looking at the confines within our existing space. So taking the footprint where the existing office is and seeing how we could work it to meet the needs of all the deficiencies that were identified through the work of Roger and his team. There's a lot that went into it, and thank you, Mr. Zeta, for his work on this too, bringing in our professionals to help go through it. And I'll turn it over him to talk a little about the RFP process and where we're going to go tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Staff processed an RFP for design services and then August 19, 2021, this year, Runa Clark Architects.
Check. Test, test, test.
Thank you.
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 Testing, testing. Check, check. Check, check. Check, one, two, check.
Testing, testing. Leaders on and let's speak at the same time with yours.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Check, check.
Testing, testing.
Speaking.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Mr. Clark, you want to start again? I'm going to go ahead and start.
Are you ready?
Yeah, it's working. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'll wait just a second. Ready? Thank you. Where I was at was on sustainability, reducing energy consumption was something that was very important to the committee. And I'm sure it's a district goal as well. Increasing daylighting, but also creating a comfortable environment also in the workplace. Energy-efficient lighting. All of those things, mechanical systems, all those things that create a better working environment. One of the things that we heard was just some of the spaces don't have the best air control. They don't have the best air conditioning. And so we wanted to make sure that that was a part of it. Visual transparency of being able to have connections to other people and to other departments was another important thing. And I think that stemmed from the overall vision that we had or that we developed together more accurately of the idea of people that can collaborate, how they can see each other, but yet they can still have that focused work area. And so that was an important piece. And providing adequate space for board interactions right now. And we talked about, you know, when you have a closed session meeting at the existing district office, you kind of just try to close that accordion door and turn the music up in the lobby and talk very softly, right? And so having areas where you can have appropriate board interactions and how the community can engage with you in public meetings and have that connection to you. There we go. Oops. That's what it is. Okay. So what we started developing is what we call bubble diagrams or relationship diagrams. And when we talk about building one and building two, so building two in this designation is actually your existing district office. And building one was identified as a new building on the site. And so you might ask is why did we reject looking at the existing building B, I guess, as you call it now? And we started looking at how it's configured. We looked at ADA issues at that site. We looked at the age of the facility, the conditions of the facility, the ADA access or lack thereof. All those kinds of things just felt like it's really going to be extremely difficult and actually almost as expensive to fix that facility and make it halfway workable as it would be to rebuild the facility on that site. And so that was kind of the logical conclusion. So what we started looking at is where does the boardroom want to be? And so we started looking at that. We looked at where the superintendent was in relation to the board. And so you see in the diagram, there's a direct correlation there of having that access to the boardroom, to a closed session room, and then to the superintendent. We looked at human resources as being immediately adjacent to the main lobby and having places for people to come in to have those interactions to have that job search and that testing requirement that you have and working with human resources. And then on the second floor of that building, having special education and business services there immediately adjacent, bringing facilities down from the upper campus into the facility so that they can work together more effectively. In the existing building, we started looking at having areas for instruction. And I'm going to go to the diagram because if I can't read it. And technology was keeping it mostly where it is right now, expanding it slightly because moving a whole server and that is very expensive, a data center. But also though, creating a better environment for them, hopefully. And then having areas for interaction and community engagement. And so what you're going to see is a thing identified as the community foundation or community and foundation rooms, meeting rooms, areas where we can do professional development, those kinds of things on site that maybe you haven't been able to do before because you didn't have the facility for it. And so just real quickly, these are some of the similar things, but this takes it and puts it over the top of more of a more developed plan. And so looking at that first floor in the yellow, starting from the left on the first floor is kind of the boardroom and the superintendent communications is right next to them. Again, creating that synergy between those departments and how they interact both with the public and with the board and with the other departments. You'll see in here then the human resources in blue. And then in the gray, you see support services and that's elevators, that's restrooms, that's all those things that keep everything moving. And then the green or teal color, you see there are common facilities that everyone shares, like a lounge as a part of that. And then on the second floor, again, you see the same colors for support services in gray. You see business services in the brown color. And then special education in sort of the purple. And then the common breakout areas and support in the teal green color. And in the existing building, and there's a couple of different options here. I'm just going to start from option one, starting from the right-hand side is technology and keeping that where it was. And the idea of that in next to them, moving instructional services into that facility. And this was a little bit different from what we talked about in the workshop, but it started to work better in terms of the test fit and how people actually work within the district. As we developed a couple of schemes, the gray again is support services, those restrooms and those lobby areas, that kind of thing in this concept. The teal was using your existing boardroom as a common meeting room for a number of different groups. And then having an area, if you so chose, for the foundation and bringing them and making them a part of the district family. In the second option, just a little bit different, and you'll see it better when we get to the floor plan in a minute. The difference here is you see the technology to the right, instructional services. But what you see is a, I guess, a more open approach for those community facilities and for the common facility at the end. And we'll show you how that works in just a moment. And this is starting to look at how does this sit on the site? And so we started looking at without, you know, tremendous impact to parking and to disrupting your facilities, how could we make this happen? And so the idea here, and I'm not going to go in too much into phasing and all of that, but making sure that it could be built in terms of either you do, you don't necessarily have to move everyone out, but you can do one building at a time. Move some of the people out, possibly to a temporary facility or at maintenance or somewhere else. Build probably the new building first and then come back and remodel it, or you could do it vice versa. It does require some site work and some rework of parking, and so you'll see that a little bit in here, but it is feasible. And so the ideas here, I do want to point out a couple of things, and I probably can't point to these on the screen. But there's an area there between the two buildings, and I do want to point that out. The idea of it was, and I talked about it before, in terms of those outdoor areas of creating that connection from indoor to out of being able to have people be able to spill out to the outside, but also having meetings outside, having functions outside, bringing your people together and bringing that unification to all the people that work in the district office. The boardroom is kind of down there on the corner as you enter the site and having an area outside of that that we can come out to the outside. The boardroom is kind of down there on the corner as you enter the site and having an area outside of that that we can come out to the outside without destroying all the landscaping and creating those kinds of environment. One of the things, you know, superintendent reminders, so is, you know, the area outside of the existing lobby at the office of creating a patio area out there. And having again, taking advantage of every inch of this site to make sure that you've created as many opportunities as possible for their work areas, for that connection to the outdoors and for your community to be a part of the facility. And so those were some of the important concepts as we developed this on the site. And then this is a kind of just a more developed floor plan to see how does it fit? How does it work? Again, not a design yet completely. Obviously, we need lots of input and certainly from the board. The board may want to do something different. But the idea is here is just how does this start to fit? How does it start to feel? How does it start to work? And so what you see here is a boardroom. The dais there that you can have set up, but this can also be for meetings. It's a flexible space. The idea that just like this room, you can have it function a number of different ways. Coming in from the lobby, you have someone that greets the public and has that connection to them and to the community. And then immediately to the right, you have human resources. They have conference rooms where they can have testing done. But they also have, and if you see that area just to the right of the core area in white, you they have some breakout areas where they can have that collaboration and they could talk to each other. They can work with the superintendent. They can work with other departments. And so those are some of those ideas that were a part of it. There's a staff lounge up there in the upper right hand corner and the idea of having an area where they can get together or have lunch. But again, immediately adjacent to that is an open patio where they can go outside and have those connections. And then there's area for communication and areas for closed offices, but also areas for open collaboration and working together. And then you see right next to the superintendent who's up in that upper left hand corner of the plan there, you see a closed session conference room. And obviously, it's also going to function for the superintendent or another department that might be able to use that. And I think one of the things we heard throughout was you work a little bit differently. You do engage with each other, you do collaborate a lot. And so you don't hoard something as mine as you share those facilities. And it really is the idea of that we can work together and create a better whole. And so that was a common theme that we talked about. And then as we moved upstairs with business services on the right hand side. And again, what you don't see is a tremendous number of offices. What you see is a lot of open workstations, a lot of open collaboration, a lot of visual connection between people that they're able to talk to each other to work together. You're seeing breakout areas up there in that upper right hand corner. You see an area where you can have multiple meetings going on, but you have areas where people can get together and bring those ideas and further the goals of the organization. Special education on the left hand side at the top of the stairs. They have areas for private meetings for those assessments that they do, the testing that they do. But an open area that they can also collaborate and so they can share between those departments. Then as we looked at a couple of different options on the existing building, and I'll start down at the right hand side with technology. And so we did a small little expansion of that facility because they just have a lot of people in there that do a lot of things and they work with a lot of sites. And so one of the things we heard is they don't have any room that they can go for a quiet meeting. And so we created a couple of quiet rooms there that they can actually then have those Zoom or Teams meetings or whatever it is that they're doing to connect to the sites as they're doing their work and supporting them. But then they could have some of that work done, their concentrated work in open office spaces where they can talk to each other too. And so it's trying to give them a flexible but collaborative work environment, a couple of offices, and then they have their data center as a part of this. And then immediately next to them, and again, the idea of sharing of someone coming into the facility is what we heard was reception is kind of shared between those departments right now. And they wanted to keep it that way. And the idea of as you come into instruction is that they could serve that role for both departments in this case. And so there's a separate door down there for them to come in, parents and that can engage in that and come into instruction. And then as we move over to what is right now, the main entry into the facility, that becomes that community, that foundation space, but also a group conference room. And so that might be professional development. One day it might be working with the foundation, another day it might be used for instructional services or technology another day. And so how can we make spaces more flexible, more usable for the district? And then another kind of crazy option here, looking at, not so crazy, but just a different way of looking at that. And so if you, obviously, a lot of people have been to conferences where you see rooms that can be subdivided a number of different ways. And so I just said to the staff, let's take a look at, you know, what if? If we added a door from the outside where you have those kind of slotted windows on the outside of the boardroom? And we created a sidewalk out there and kind of, you know, one of the things that it struck me is as we were in one of our executive meeting, a lady came by and she was walking her dog right outside those windows. And it was kind of neat, but the idea was is if we could create an entrance from there, now we can have a meeting going on in that existing boardroom. And then we could have even two meetings going on in different spaces within that lobby. And we could subdivide and use that a different way. And so looking at how can we maximize every square feet inside the building, just like we talked about doing outside the building? And then we looked at what is all this cost? And so we started looking at, and these are, you know, broad numbers. Costs are a little crazy right now. There's supply chain issues, there's things that we don't know. We don't know what we're going to run into with governing agencies yet. But these are based on previous experience. We've had quite a few district office facilities and headquarters facilities. And so these are fairly recent numbers in terms of past experience. And so we looked at the new building, the remodel, the site work that we have to do. We do have to do some grading in the corner of that site to make sure that we have an accessible entry into the main new building and into the boardroom. And so we do have some rework there. There's some interim housing costs. And then so then there's a total hard cost. And then what we did is budgeted just a number for soft costs. And soft costs are things like furniture and equipment, architects fees and engineering fees, plan check fees, inspection fees, all those things that are not hard construction. They support getting to that final point, but they're not the hard construction cost. And so right now we're tracking a budget just, you know, close to about $11 million for the facility or for the concept or feasibility study that you see here. And so I'm going to turn the time back over to Jeff and he's going to talk about the process going forward.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate the presentation. I like to follow money slides, so that's why I will take up the last one here. As I mentioned, and I think it's important to note, this is one option that was explored, but you can see all the deficiencies and desires or improvements that have been identified for the district office functions. One thing when we mention options that I should bring up, and we do have some examples here tonight with School Power and Mr. Sam and Steve, there is potential for partnerships with projects like this as well. Because it is really a community space, administrative space and not a school. There's potential that we may look and do with School Power or potentially some of our neighbors or the city. So none of that has been really explored because we haven't received direction at this point, which is what we're here tonight to do is we've examined the deficiencies related to the district office. Now we've done it beginning in 2015 and we did it again now tonight. What we're looking for direction is, is the scope of a project like this something we want to pursue? And if so, we would then look at adding it to the facilities master plan, which will come back later this year for information first and then action the following meeting. In doing that, we would develop a cash flow model that would build this project within the existing capacity of our capital improvement program. So we wouldn't change any of the current funding model that we have. But in order to do so, because of the significance of this project, this would be one of those that we need to push out a few years so that can we save up and balance the other projects around it. So I'd be happy to take any questions. And then, of course, we have Mr. Zeta and Mr. Clark here as well.
Dirk, I know this is a jump ahead, but with parking, what will happen to the parking since our high school students and other people use that parking while the construction is going on?
In the hypothetical project, you would likely lose the parking on a project of that scale. I obviously going into planning something like that to limit the amount of loss of parking to the extent possible, to the greatest extent possible would be what we do. We had a similar experience with the tennis court project and we did those improvements, trying to minimize the number of parking spots that we would use out front. So it's not something we're not used to doing.
Thank you. Any other question? Comments?
You mentioned some other district office offices to look at. Could you mention which district offices you think are well done?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Ryan. Some of them are much larger than yours. Did a brand new facility for Palm Springs Unified, but we've also done additions at Saddleback Unified. We worked with Ryan, actually, when he was at Irvine Unified. And we can certainly take you to any one of those. Irvine is probably close to some of the ideas and concepts that have been developed here. I would say Saddleback was more focused on their boardroom and superintendents and some of that as opposed to some of the older facility there. But I would say those are a couple of examples. I have others, but they're even much bigger than that. Coachella did their district office. One I could point you to is not necessarily a school district office, but it's a water district office. And it's for East Valley Water District. We did their headquarters for them. And again, same kinds of ideas were developed there in terms of it has a boardroom, it has the executive offices. It has, you know, the same type of collaborative work environment. And that I think would probably be the closest one I could point you to in terms of the work environment. And we can provide photographs or a tour of that facility also.
Okay. And where's that water district?
East Valley Water District. It's actually in San Bernardino.
Okay. And I wondered, so when the board wasn't using the boardroom, that would be used by community? Is that the plan? Or who, I mean, we don't want it to just sit empty.
There is no plan. That was just hypothetical based on potential, potential for flex spaces. So I would consider a lot of those flex spaces with potential design in the future.
And Jeff, how many parking spaces do we have now?
I saw that it would be at 129, but.
I'm sorry, how many parking spaces?
Yeah, do we have current?
I believe 110, yeah.
110, okay. So it'd be a few more. Because you said we'd have 129. In one of the plans, it was 129 parking spaces. So it would be more parking?
I don't think the, certainly parking would be part of the exploration option when we, if we move forward with the project. That isn't something that we actually designed or I think it's the issue of needing more parking is well known and documented. So if we were to go down a project of any sort and we could provide more parking, I think that would be an obvious choice for us in the planning of it, but we're not. Again, this is just, we're very preliminary. This is just showing based on the deficiencies that have been identified, the potential new building could actually fit on the existing site. But again, there are other options that may not involve the site that we haven't explored at this point.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to say thank you guys for this really detailed presentation. You've given us a lot to think about. On building one, the new two story proposed building, we have on there about 10,000 square feet. It seems like we're adding a lot of square feet. Do we know what the current square footage is on the houses, the house down there? Just trying to quantify the amount of new square footage that we're, we would be gaining as a community.
I think specific square footage numbers or details that I could provide after to be exact. I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's information we have and we could certainly provide easily.
Would it, since we're going to two stories, would it be reasonable to think that if it's a one story, it's about 5,000 square feet or less? So we're doubling it going to two stories?
I would say that's a fair assumption.
Okay. I just, because that's a lot of space, that's a lot of space that we'd be gaining for all of the things that you've mentioned. Okay. And in the, in the plan, it seems like we're really trying to draw people into multiple entries. But do we foresee a single main focal entrance that people would go to and not end up in the wrong spot, which is something maybe unique to our current facilities?
I think the idea would be is having proper wayfinding, but also that I think it would be fairly obvious, hopefully through the design, that that is the main entry. And then they might be directed if they need to go to instruction or they might, you know, if you had a foundation office meeting or, you know, typically the public is not going to technology, but the only other one would be is over to technology. Otherwise, they're going to that main building. And so really, the only other one is instructional services over in the existing building.
That makes sense. Okay. Especially if you're going to a two story building, that would probably be the largest, most prominent one, especially with good wayfinding. Okay.
And just on the parking, just for a second, is kind of to the left of that drive and kind of that triangular area, that would be the area affected primarily. And so the existing lot to the east would actually stay intact even during construction.
And so I also wanted to comment on the amount of areas for community engagement that I noticed in the plan. One of the things that I've noticed throughout our school sites is that they're busy during the day. So sometimes outside of staff meetings, there's a need for people in the community to get together during school hours. It's fine now because school is out, we're in the middle school library. But adding lots of flexible spaces for those to occur, since we have a really highly engaged community seems like a step in the right direction so that we're not impacting school sites, which typically don't have any parking as well because their staff is here and parked. That's been one of the concerns I've heard actually all of our school sites is there's really no place to come and park on a school site. They're fully parked out. So the parking and the community engagement kind of go hand in hand.
Okay, great. And then Jeff, when the committee was working together on the flexible space for between option one and option two, with option two, would it also be things like PTA council? I'm trying to figure out things when different groups want to come and discuss whether it's gardening literacy, different things that we've have different groups come in even to the board to talk about. Could that be space where they would gather as well? And are you envisioning that only during the day or envisioning that at night as well? I'm trying to figure out the flexible option, trying to see how flexible, what you guys were imagining. Or whoever wants to speak to it. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Yes, sir.
The idea would be, and I think if you look at the plan, there's a door there that you could close off that they couldn't get access to the rest of the building. And you could have that operate any time of the day or night. And so you can actually shut that off. You could also have it so that, you know, just the existing boardroom is open. You could have it a number of different ways. And so that's the idea of that flexibility is that you could have those opportunities to have that operate more often. And so those partitions or those movable partitions can be locked down. And so then you only have a single entry from the outside. And that's why we added, and I'll go to that plan. So I'm not just talking.
And when I'm imagining the partitions, I was imagining like at the high school library, which really isn't security. It's just kind of like you're moving around, but you need something that provides security that can be locked. Okay, that, okay.
And so the idea is I have, there's a door there from the outside in each of those spaces. And so I can either come into one space or I can open it all up as one big space or three different small ones. So it's, again, the idea is that flexibility, how you use it, whether it's day or night. And then having the ability to, and there's a restroom that's off of that so that I have the ability that we can then close it off from the rest of the facility.
Thank you. And then if on option one of building two, I think I'm going to end up needing writing classes, but if this is, if this is all foundation right now, what would, is that the foundation moving into that space and then coming out of the little building on St. Anne's, like relinquishing that building or is it just temporary? Sorry.
We would, I think, retain that building as well. The intent, I believe, for the St. Anne's building would be to modernize it and continue to look for options and opportunities to utilize that building, whether it's Community Resource Center. Again, we Again, we recognize there's not a lot of community spaces. It's something we've been talking about with school power. So we wouldn't want to give up this space. And I know that we've been, there's some discussions around making this space more usable for, for school power. And additional uses beyond that currently, regardless of what happens with this building. It serves here to speak if she wants to add to or whatever it might be as well.
I just, I just want to clarify the one option one, that is school power leaving the little building on St. Anne's and moving into that space.
Correct. We'll keep the other one and it would still be functional for other things.
Okay. And that could, the other space in St. Anne's could be developed into something for students. But this option two space on building two, option two, that really can, could that be a student space too? Or, okay, so you could use either one. So it really. Everyone's needs are covered. Any other?
A couple of comments and. I, no offense, Sarah, but there would be a major shift to move the foundation into offices in those buildings. And I would need to, would need to refresh on what the history of that is. And it could be just founded in times when we were really lacking in finances. And there was a strong sentiment not to, I mean, they would, we didn't provide a facility for them. Although initially school foundation, the educational foundation was started by the Board of Education. So I know that that history is there. And I just, I need to bring that point up because I, I just have to say I was a little surprised to see it in the plan. The, it's just a comment, so.
And just that they would, regardless, we would house any kind of group, but the groups have to pay rent.
Okay, that, that clears it up then. Okay. Because then that's not, it's not a major shift. It's just a different location. You know, you probably do know that when we remodeled the tech and added that one and connected the buildings that as a courtesy, we did design review. Because we don't have to. And so I just would like to bring that up as something, if you've already discussed it, if it's going to be a topic of discussion. As far as our relations with the city that is kind of in that neighborhood, being on the neighborhood street and across from the residences. I know it opens up a Pandora's box and there was some, you know. There was some controversy over it at that time, but the project went very, very well. But we did it to be, to have that relationship with the city that even though we're not required to, that we did what everyone else would have to. I want to follow up on that comment. I, I would be, to me, all of these people that need workspace and need collaboration, need to have all of their spaces are the priority. If we have 18 board meetings a year and then some other meetings, some special meetings, to have what I would say like a grand facility. We don't, in my opinion, I wouldn't need that. I wouldn't want that. I want the, the major use to be for the people that are doing the work every day, all day long. So that's. Let me see if I made any other notes. I think that was it. I understand this is a preliminary and designing is complex. But I'm thinking that the needs of the day-to-day operation of the district is the priority. Thank you.
Thank you for a very well thought out plan. I don't know much about building. School sites for elementary, secondary administration. I do know a lot about building college buildings. I've signed my name on, on the top beam of lots of buildings, including a $96 million crime lab at Cal State LA. If I'm understanding right, that we're going to demolish both buildings?
No, we're going to demolish the house that is housing business services now. We're going to keep and remodel the existing building.
Okay, so I can understand demolishing the house. I can't see putting any money into the old administration building from my perspective and my experience. My other thing following with Jan's comments, we're talking about a two-story building and how that will affect neighbors' views. And I think that goes with Jan was talking about going through design review and getting the neighbors to buy into what we're talking about. That I totally agree that the current building is a challenge and a big challenge for the people who work there and something needs to be done. I'm just wondering if there is other possibilities. I know that the Archdiocese of Orange is interested in selling St. Kevin's of Sienna's school. It's already a modern updated building. It would be great for our pre-K folks. It would be great for. His parking, you wouldn't be changing really anything about it. It would give us, it would give us another opportunity as far as to rethink about adding more parking as far as. For if we just tore everything down. I, again, I'm a pipe dreamer. At our campus at San Jose State, we did a joint powers authority with the university and the city to build a modern library. I, I know our library is very limited in the city. It would be wonderful to have an all-school library that could be even opened many, many hours more than what the kids have available to them on this location. And those are just some, some thoughts I have, but I totally agree that something needs to be done, but I wouldn't put another penny into remodeling. That the existing building. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
So basically we need to talk about adding it to the plan. Is that what you need?
Yeah, we get consensus that we can go back, take the larger scale project, knowing that there are lots of other options to still explore. But knowing that we want to address this at this, the scale, we will put that in the facilities master plan to make it work. Board will have an opportunity to review that coming up in February usually before action. And then the master plan is updated every year. And with all facilities projects, it's not just about approving in the master plan with a project of this scale. There's also going to be a bid and construction award as well. So there'll be lots of opportunities between now and we'll come back with the master plan and beyond for this project and discussion. But for planning, we, we really like, this is one of our, our bigger projects that we did at all the schools. We need to start planning cash flow. The sooner the better because construction costs don't go down. They usually just go up and up and up. So we would like to get it addressed sooner rather than later.
So the. I thought, I thought somewhere this within long-range planning already.
Thank you, Mary. It, it is, Mr. Zada talked about that. It is in the master plan right now, a million and a half dollars for just the boardroom expansion and minor restroom upgrades. But this goes beyond that, which is what we, we could do, but we don't want to start messing with the facilities master plan unless there's interest and direction from the board to pursue something like this. So we can make it work within the confines of our fiscal constraints.
I think like Jen, I also thought it was there from the last time we had the conversations. We even talked about like the administrative building of the high school and kind of going down into that and doing stuff. And so something needs to be done. The buildings are old. I agree with Jim that investing money into those old houses doesn't make much sense. It doesn't seem to be a good use of tax dollars. I'm not the expert on that though. I mean, Jim has much more experience. I'm not the expert on it. So I would look to you guys to what would be the best thing to do around that. I think the functionality needs to be there. I, I agree that those open spaces are very important, including that boardroom. I, I love the idea of a library. I don't know how much kids actually use libraries in the traditional way. It's really about having technology and access and a place to, to be. And if that was something joint with the city, and that's a whole nother thing that doesn't help solve the problem that we're trying to solve right now. So I'm not saying it has to happen, but it's a great conversation around that. I think parking is always an issue and I think making sure the sightlines remain the same, which I know you guys are, have already had those conversations. We always want to be good neighbors, right? I don't know if design review is what we really go through. I mean, we have a working relationship with the city. I would think that we would do all the things we need to do to build. And I think that we should move forward with changing and really have to rely upon you guys as the experts. I just think we all want a little. Something different from each other or maybe there are common ground. I guess that's what we need, just maybe spend just a couple more minutes. See if there's an exploration of what we can give you guys to find that common ground. And I know this could be the normal thing where we all have this feedback for architects and then you come back again. Is that the norm? Okay.
What we'd probably want to do is a, some type of board study session where if you got to a point where you wanted to look at design. When I was just writing down here was, you know, maybe we want to look at an option where you replace both buildings. But there's a cost impact from that. And so, but at least then you have that on the table and you can make informed decisions.
Right. We might see that cost impact and say that's not worth.
I just want, I, I don't share that same opinion. I mean, I, when you bring this forward as far as the feasibility of remodeling, if that's, you know, with your expertise, then. I don't have the same feeling about that. And what I see is it would be a major additional cost.
Jen, you don't, not the first building? You want to leave the first building as is or the whole thing? Okay.
I didn't want to say that it, by not saying that I don't share the same opinion, then it didn't represent what I thought.
Totally, I totally understand. Okay, thank you.
And do you have a cost estimate of how much more it would cost to demolish that and do a whole new plan? I, I know sometimes it costs less to actually demolish than to try to, try to save things that are there.
We'll, we'll, can we, we'll, we'll get that information and get back to, to the board because that, that is information we can certainly get. But since we have all the exact dimensions and building material type, we can get a better number than just estimating right now.
I wanted to just clarify something that, that I see. I see the existing remodel only at about a million out of the 11 million. So I know, Jim, you had a concern about maybe not doing anything to building two. Jan, you mentioned there's already a million and a half allocated in the facilities master plan for, for the boardroom and restrooms, which are currently in building two. Right? So the question really is whether we want to do a major remodel on one to the tune of an additional. $10 million. I don't, I don't know, Jeff, if pulling out one is affects the cost significantly, but it sounds like they're two, two separate concepts in some ways. But the remodel, the small remodel on building two is a very small percentage of the total cost of this project.
Yeah. Perhaps we could develop more options, bringing back to the board for discussion. To kind of cover a larger scale of what we've talked about, including demolishing both buildings, looking more in-depth at potential parking options. It may have a cost to it and we can bring that back in the future to discuss with the board. Would that, would that work?
Yeah, my agreement of what I thought the board was saying was we all wanted to see it come back. Not that we all had the same ideas or agreement on it. Just that we, this is something we wanted to move forward. That's what.
I think you just need to be careful about where, where we fall as far as we could design a camel. I don't want to do that. If the, I mean, the board.
Right, fine point.
Jen, could you repeat yourself? I'm having a hard time hearing you and I really, I really want to know what you're saying.
I'm just concerned, you know, we start putting our own things too much into it. This is what, this is their career, their job, what they are experts at. We could design a camel. I don't want to do that. So I want it to be, I mean, sure, we can explore other options, but to me, the bottom line for us is. To be cognizant of overall costs and be cognizant of we, if we hire someone to do the job, that we really don't feel we need to make significant. Personal.
Well then Jen, I guess the first question asked then and Jason is, does this fit your needs? I know you brought it forward, but does this fit everyone's needs and the teacher needs you see? Does it fit teacher needs, Mike sees? You, sir, you may not speak right now. Thank you.
And I know that we have made mistakes in the past when we have remodeled. That one of the plans that we did remodeling, someone wasn't able to scale the project. And we ended up with all these tiny little rooms that were like closets that we thought we would be able to use for conference room. So I think it's important to have a lot of input.
I'm going to ask the question again, though. Does, does this fit the needs?
So the building itself in terms of layout and is that what your request is, your question?
Either option one or option two.
Again, these, these are, you know, these are initial conversations that we've had. And I think that the reality of it is for us is to determine what, you know, what the direction of the board is to this board wish us to look for other locations. Does the board wish us to bring back, you know, a couple of different options on the same site? You know, we're very limited in terms of our land ownership. We only have a few places that we own, most of which are schools. But, you know, there are other, you know, potential, very limited, but, you know, Dr. Kelly brings up, you know, a potential, potential option that we could also explore. There is no commitment by the board tonight, but we, if we could get a little direction as to what you'd like us to do, and it could be multiple things to come back and report on. It doesn't have to be, you know, just one thing. So I recognize I've heard a couple of different things tonight. You know, we could kind of circle back and, you know, come back with a couple of different ideas for, you know, to talk about, maybe not to the point. Because I think with the buildings laid out, I think we have a general idea of what we need in terms of functionality. Where that happens would need to be a discussion, you know, that we could continue, whether it's, like I said, in our current facility. Or looking at, you know, we have the bus yard. We might, you know, it might not be the best location, but there's also, that's one of the few places we have. We could maybe replicate something like this, knowing that we've done some of the adjacencies. We would just need to make kind of a determination of what the board, you know, interest is for us to kind of bring back. We don't want to, that's, I think this member Vickers is pointing out, you know, have everybody ask for something different to come back. And then we're, you know, then we're, we're chasing our tail. So if we get a little bit of consensus as to what people would maybe like to see, we'd be happy to be able to do that.
We don't want it to die in committee. Want to be asked in Florida. And I think having that flexibility, the option of building something, and again, you guys are the experts. So the fifth function in the needs of the district, the students and the community as a whole, I'm very excited, is that it includes community components, right? And if that is better suited off-site at another location, if that is best suited where it is now. I think having, you guys exploring that is very vital before you come back and present. And you could end up presenting, this is the thing we want to report with. I think we just need to, I would hope that you would look at those other options too. So, and we can look for consensus on that.
Yeah, I, I would like the superintendent to also look into St. Kevin's Sienna property and see where, if, if there's a possibility. For meeting our needs there.
And I, I support looking at some other options as well, at least exploring them. So we know that we have covered some of the other district-owned properties as well as other possible properties for acquisition. I think that's a fair request to make when we're looking at a 10 to 11 million dollar project. So I'm in full support of that. And the, the needs that are identified could go many different places. So I think the feasibility study is still very high quality and I look forward to seeing other options if that's the consensus from the board.
I'm also open to looking at other options. I don't though think I am in favor of the bus barn out in the canyon. I would like it to be more central and I really like the idea of having community be able to use it also. That's important to me.
Jeff, do you need any of the else from us? Or does that cover it? On this top?
No, I, I think we know what we need. What we'll do is we'll continue working with Ru now and developing. Expanding option, looking at other options, and then we will still. Look to adding or potentially adding it as alternatives or options to the master plan. So at least we can start looking at it preliminarily or at least on our end, start planning for something to come. start looking at it preliminarily, or at least on our end, start planning for something to come as, you know, facilities projects take many, many years. So we're not in a hurry for that regard, but we would like to start planning just so we can prepare ourselves for whatever projects are coming our way.
The collaboration to, to create this draft plan is amazing. All the different thoughts that you brought forward to us. I'm excited. I'm excited to see what you bring back in February. And this is great, the way it is. I wasn't trying to say that. I was just trying to encompass everyone's thoughts. With that, it is time to um, at seven eleven. So let's recess for, we'll be back at seven fifteen. Thanks everyone. Moving on to B or B report on data from twenty 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 one and areas focused for twenty twenty two. Before we go to public speaking, I just want to let you know, we have some speaker cards appear that they might be related to something that's not on this agenda for the special meeting. But this agenda is about student achievement from last year. And so if their comments aren't in relation to that, we, we invite you to the regular meeting where we have items on non-agenda and you can speak there. Kelly, is anyone wishing to speak on the review of discussions of the report on data from twenty twenty one and areas of focus?
Yes, I have four speakers and the first one up to speak on item four B, the topic is student outcomes. Laura Sextro, you can come up to the podium and that person will be followed by Shannon Hune, again, speaking on item four B.
This is already up. All right, very good. Ready? All right. On October eighth, twenty twenty, this board voted and passed resolution twenty sixteen. A resolution that states Laguna Beach Unified School District recognizes that institutional racism within our system has created harmful environments for all students. That is a serious statement if it were true.
You're welcome to come to the next.
This is related to data. I hope someone stopped the clock here because you guys are eating into my time. Thank you.
This is your three minutes, but this is not on topic. So if you want to.
This is, this is absolutely related to, to data.
We're talking about students.
Related to education elements and the data around that.
That's not what we're speaking about tonight. You can come back at the regular meeting. We look forward to hearing from you on non-agenda items. If you want to speak to the achievement data and outcomes of our students last year.
I'd like to speak to the data that's expected from education elements.
That's not what the topic is about tonight is all I'm telling.
The topic that was presented on the card was data.
Sir. It's not the topic. By the experts are about to speak to the topic.
So I'm, I'm prepared as a parent to speak to the board about education elements, which is very much rooted in data. Are you denying me access? Are you denying me the opportunity to do that?
No, we would love to hear from that at a regular board meeting. This is a special meeting.
I'll be happy to be at the next board meeting as well. Trust me, I will be at every board meeting from now until I leave residency in Laguna Beach, California, to include after my daughter graduates from high school. So I am quite confident we will become very familiar with one another. But I'm asking you right now, tonight, are you denying me the ability to speak to the board?
I'm allowing you to speak to the board on the topic that we're having a special meeting about this evening, which is about data. It's about student outcomes.
About data.
It's about twenty twenty one, twenty student outcomes and areas of focus.
Well, you engaged in this contract in twenty twenty. So I think that's very, very relevant. So I'll ask again, are you guys denying me the ability to address the board?
I'm not denying you the ability to address the board. I'm asking you to stay on the topic that we're discussing.
This is topic.
Okay.
Right. You, you're talking about ensuring safe and equitable and inclusive schools. I'm excited about that topic. I actually wrote about that. So I'd like to address the board. Excellent. So do you want to start the clock over? What's up? All right. That's a serious statement if it were true. If in fact, LBUSD is affected by institutional or systemic racism. It is incumbent upon this board to notify the parents, student body and the community as a whole, and explain in very specific terms. How is systemic racism defined by Laguna Beach Unified School District? The district's website on equity gives no such definition. Furthermore, if Laguna Beach schools are plagued with systemic racism, then what role has this board played? Jan Vickers, you have been on the board for in excess of four decades. Carol Normandin, you have been on the board for more than seven years. Why has this now just being addressed? Have you guys been complicit? Or are you propagating this supposed systemic racism? In reality, there is no systemic racism in this school district. And let me be clear. I very much believe that racism exists, individual racism, and I think it needs to be addressed and it's an awful thing. But to promote the idea that this is rooted and derived in racism as a system is a fallacy. You use the current political landscape to inconspicuously engage in a relationship with education elements. And use $250,000 for an equity study. This was done behind closed doors without transparency and without the consent of parents, taking the opportunity to review the materials being used by education elements. And although they intentionally refrain from specifically using the term critical race theory, the ideology of CRT is woven throughout. The ideas, tactics, words, philosophies and practices presented in the education elements materials and use of terms like equity and inclusion are interchangeable with CRT. Critical race theory holds that the most important thing about you is your race, the color of your skin. Not your behavior, not your values, not your environment, but your race. And what I find to be incredibly hubris is for all of you to sit on your pedestal and make judgments about the morals of this student body. As I stated before, individual racism does exist and should be addressed. But anecdotal evidence laid out in radical ideology does not indicate a significant problem, let alone one that is systemic. All of you serve at the will of the voters. We are gal.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Shannon Hune, our next speaker. Our next speaker following Shannon Hune will be Sherry Morgan. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My comments relate to the district's area of focus because our equity and anti-racist initiative is laying the groundwork for what kind of ethnic studies curriculum we might adopt. And whether we'll focus on a liberation framework or constructive framework. And I'm here more because of what I stand for than what I stand against. I stand for fairness. I stand for understanding and I stand for our shared humanity and the common purpose it gives us around our children's education. And I oppose racism in the strongest possible terms. The question is, how are we teaching our kids about race? As I understand it, the original idea behind the anti-racism resolution was to actively oppose racism in our schools to create a positive school climate so that every child can be at their best to learn irrespective of their race. A lot of other ideas have made their way into the conversation, but this seems like the uncontroversial idea we can all get behind. However, I've talked to tons of people from all sides of the political spectrum. And only one person I've talked to had any idea what the terms in the anti-racist resolution really meant, and a lot still don't. To be fair, we were at the height of the worst part of COVID and a lot of difficult conflict. And so when the issue of racial reckoning came up, it was something we could all say without hesitating. We did what seemed like the right thing, brought the conversation forward in the language being used at the time. So now time goes by and turns out there are radically different ways of actively opposing racism. And it turns out, again, with all sympathy for the context, the district chose and from what I can see is kind of gone far down a path based on a framework that turns out is really political. So I'm left wondering, what are we going to do about that for our kids? And how do we do this in a way that keeps the focus on learning? The public has had only one update on the activities of the steering committee since October. That was last March. And at that point, Ed Elements spoke of, spoke of needing sweeping and substantial changes to our systems. And the next step sounded like community input. But the district's website on equity lists meetings and workshops for not just the committee, but staff, principals and teachers. But no information about the content or why we're training our teachers when we haven't even said what we're doing. So in terms of areas of focus, I implore the staff and the board to stand with me for fairness and understanding for our community. Please, let's take a pause, not a wait means never, as Martin Luther King says, but a pause to fully inform the public about exactly what has been done in the last year. Here's what I would respectfully request. Make public all of the notes, videos, recordings and materials from all the steering committee sessions, all workshops, training, everything. Make public how many instructional minutes are being spent teaching the Ed Elements concepts to our children and what classes and for what educational purpose. And hold a series of expert piano sponsor.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you very much. Next, next speaker is Sherry Morgan, speaking on item four B. And that will be followed by Rod Tippel. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't begin to be as eloquent as my predecessors, so I'm not going to even try. But I would like to concur that a pause needs to occur. The document that came out as a public letter that you've attached to your, to your, to your communications with the community, the open letter to the district, had a lot of really great parts to it. And it had a lot of parts to it that weren't great. But one of the things I know from me personally that I signed it for is because it encouraged open lines of communication. And for the 10 plus years that I've been standing here in front of you, of which I will point out, all the characters except for one have changed through the years. And so for the, to go back to the building development, it is important to keep in mind that a huge community input is always welcome because we are here a lot longer than most of you. But I digress. The, um, the document that was submitted in May by the community encouraged open lines of communication. And that is, it is true. There has been very little since then, and it's been done behind closed doors. And it's been done with hand-selected committees, not members of the community that actually have different experiences other than what's happening behind the closed doors at the office. But I would also like to focus on this report that you're submitting tonight on student outcomes and areas of focus. And I'd like to bring it back to the underlying theme here, which is total transparency. When you look at this report, it's very confusing. You've taken tier one and tier two needs and lumped them together. And tier two is a level of intervention that can go into tier three or can go into tier one. But when you're lumping it into tier, tier one, it seems as though you're making the overall success weighted with those kids into tier two that really need help as well. If you look at just K through eight student outcomes in math, sixty six percent of grade six through eight are supposedly in tier one level. That means thirty four percent of our children are in the tier two and tier three intervention. That's a lot. For a district such as ours that is so, so incredibly funded, how come we have thirty four percent of our kids that are needing intervention? How come it's not, and, and why is tier one, where students have to enter, they're to be counted, they need some sort of support? That seems to, it, it, it's not, it's celebrated like, look, we're at sixty six percent. And I know I've asked this question about tier one, tier two and tier three, and they've said everybody's in tier one. But thirty four percent of our population isn't. And for a district that claims they're so high achieving, that's really disappointing. And that's just one example. So I think you need to go through, I would like to see this report be more specific and.
Thank you, Sherry. Next step is Rod Tippel speaking on agenda item four B.
Stated rationale for the education elements program was a local incident four years ago. And a reference to quote civil unrest of summer twenty twenty unquote. The entire program is based upon a false premise of systemic racism in America. Following the tragic death of George Floyd, where data intensive studies of policing refute the claim. The violent anti-police riots of twenty twenty were emotional responses co-opted for political purposes by powerful actors behind the scenes. The simple truth measured on a multitude of parameters is that there is no place on earth, including Africa, where the African diaspora thrived more than in America, however imperfect our history. The question before us, does our community understand what is at stake for the well-being of our students, our society? Yuri Bezmenov, a former KGB agent spoke of the Soviet four-stage strategy of ideological subversion in a famous interview. Stage one, demoralization. The Soviets started this in our schools in the nineteen sixties. Bezmenov remarked, quote, "On drop-off would not have dreamed of the effect of thirty-five years of demoralization in America." A person who was demoralized will refuse to believe reality, even when the face of overwhelming evidence. A person, the society become brainwashed with propaganda, unable to reason, highly susceptible to emotional manipulation and control. Sound familiar? Ideological subversion is progressive. Stages progress to destabilization, crisis, and finally, normalization. A cynical term. People are deceived to believe that they're in peace when they're in an all-out war with a totalitarian state. The takeover always leads with a noble nod to equity. The subversion always ends with decimation. Ronald Reagan restored our patriotism, love of country, defense of the constitution, our American identity in the nineteen eighties. Without him, America would likely have fallen to the Soviets. He warned us, freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. Now, our children's generation is face to face with education elements. A group of unknowns with familiar tactics that shame, humiliate, isolate, alienate and dominate our thinking in our classrooms while actively intimidating our children from speaking their young minds. Critical race theory, a revision of Maoist critical theory, is at the root of every page of the education element program. A horrific situation for our children and our country. We need more Martin Luther King Jr. and less Mao in our schools.
Thank you, Rod. I have no further public comment cards.
To provide us information on student outcomes from last year. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. So tonight we'll, I'll be speaking around how our students did last year. You know, different observations we had, some of the data we have, this is not a full set of a lot, all the data that we looked at, but this is definitely some of the pieces that we look at. With me tonight, I have some members of our structural services department. I have with us Dr. Michael Keller, our director of social emotional support. Then also have Dr. Betsy Camberg, our director of assessment accountability. They'll be presenting with me as well. So the, the data that we'll share tonight, we've organized it through the lens of the three district goals or L cap goals. On college and career readiness skills, social emotional competencies or skills, safe, equitable and inclusive schools. Put this next slide in here. Maybe, let's see, there we go. Really as to give us the lens as we look at this data around what happened last year. It was a very challenging year, probably one of the most challenging years students have ever had. I can certainly speak for myself. There's no comparison to my experience to what kids went through last year. It was a very challenging year for students, for parents, families and staff. So when you look at the data tonight, this is an important lens that I think we all keep in mind, right? Yes, right now things are better than they were a year ago, but we're not back to where we were two years ago before the pandemic. And so. And so we're still doing a lot of practices to support that. This is a list of a lot of the things our families went through, our kids went through, our staff went through, different health conditions, economic uncertainty. Social emotional wellness, stress and fear around the pandemic, diverse student academic needs, different learning environments. Some were at home, were virtual, were a person, were in hybrid, with simultaneous teaching going on at one point at secondary level. And obviously, every kid has a different level of adult support. And so whether that's, you know, at home or with us on campus or sometimes, you know, being virtual, it takes on a whole different role. And so this is really, you know, I admire and I'm very appreciative of the perseverance, the adaptability and the courage that our students, families and staff displayed last year. And I think it's really important to recognize that and thank them for the grace and support that they gave each other. We all gave each other that partnership last year. So I want to keep, that's important to keep that in mind as we go through this. And as we continue, so I'll start here, the first goal around college and career readiness, this is the largest set of data. And I'll take a break after each goal, so we can have if you want to ask questions and follow up. But let's start with this, this is our graduating, this data is from our graduating seniors last year, class of twenty twenty-one. These are five data points that we look at, there's obviously again more than this. But what this shows here is our kids, you know, we had our similar graduation rate we've had in the past. We actually, almost two-thirds of the kids pass an AP exam at some point during high school. Similar number of students were eligible for UC to attend UC or CSU's. We had almost forty percent of the students show a high-level proficiency in another language. And then we had seventeen percent complete of CTE pathway. There's this class went through a year and a half, almost a full year and a half with the pandemic and their learning experience. And we're thankful that, you know, a lot of them, you know, we'll continue to look at this as yours come, but we're thankful that this group had maintained and in some cases even improved some of the related data points from the previous class of twenty twenty, which are listed kind of there at the bottom of the slide. The next they will look at is iReady, and I'll have Dr. Canenberg share with them.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. Good evening. I'll be sharing some information about one of our newer district assessment tools, iReady, and its role within our multi-tiered systems of support for our students. Intervention teams at each of our schools utilize multiple measures to determine student academic needs. The iReady diagnostic is one of the tools that our school teams use to measure learning and better understand our students' unique academic needs. The iReady diagnostic provides comprehensive insight into student learning across multiple domains and mathematics and reading with the intent to help identify the specific skills each student needs to develop as well as areas of strength. The benefits for our educators are that iReady serves as a universal screening tool that identifies students for additional academic support, informs differentiated instruction so that all students are appropriately challenged, allows for personalized digital learning pathways and helps to monitor student progress, set goals and most importantly, celebrate growth. There are some differences between iReady and CASP, which our students have historically participated in every spring. iReady is a national assessment and the proficiency bands and cut scores are different from that of the CASP, which is a state assessment. Another key difference is that the iReady test is designed so that student outcome data is actionable, meaning that results are provided in real time and diagnostic reports are designed with responsive instruction in mind. For example, teachers may monitor and adjust teaching in response to trends in student skill proficiency, pinpoint specific standards of focus for students, set individualized goals and growth targets, access standards-based lesson resources and also create flexible, skill-based instructional groups. In classrooms at the elementary level in particular, small groups are an important component of the daily instructional model, ensuring that all students are appropriately challenged and that students needing more support are receiving additional time with staff, supplemental interventions or re-engagement with targeted standards. K-eight students also have the option of accessing personalized learning platforms through the iReady student portal at their individualized instructional levels, which serves as an additional layer of intervention and complements the direct teaching that they receive in the classroom. Another important distinction between iReady and CASP is that students are able to take the iReady diagnostic multiple times throughout the year. This enables enables our school teams to monitor student progress and to determine whether students are on track to meet their individual end-of-year growth goals. And interventions can then be adjusted accordingly. The tier one and two data on this chart reflects the total number of students who are either approaching at or above grade level in reading based on the criteria set by the iReady diagnostic assessment. This assessment measures phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary and at the upper grade level comprehension of literature and comprehension of informational text. Based on, thank you. So we're going to now take a look at a little bit deeper, our students who may benefit from tier three intensive interventions. This data shows the student reading outcomes in comparison to other students at the state and national level. For reference, over four hundred and thirty-two students across California took the iReady diagnostic in spring in an in-school setting. At the national level, over four million students participated in the iReady diagnostic test across thirty-nine different states. Again, this is a measurement of students who may need more intensive supplemental instruction in addition to their regular core instruction to address those areas of need in reading where they may be below grade level to promote learning acceleration and recovery. To date, we only have comparison data available for grades kindergarten through eighth grade. However, the iReady research team is working on establishing some comparative normative data for students in grades nine and ten. So hopefully we will have that by the end of the year. As you can see, when we look at our kindergarten through second grade students, our students performed better than those across the state and national level in terms of number of students needing support. Now, keep in mind the criteria across the grade levels and the rigor increases with each progressive year. As we look ahead to grades three, four and five, we notice again that our fewer students in Laguna Beach Unified may benefit from those intensive tier three interventions. However, when we move through grades five, six, seven and eight, we do see an increase in the number of students who require additional support. Again, keeping in mind that the rigor and complexity of the text increases as students move throughout the grades. It's important to break down this data further to see which students all in under tier one, which is high-quality core instruction with universal strategies. So for all students versus tier two, those students who may benefit from targeted and supplemental small group instruction. Tier two would typically happen within the classroom setting. We have many resources here in Laguna, including additional support added to our classrooms. And we're able to pull students into small groups and really pinpoint those specific needs and give them the scaffolding that they need to access the core standards. So you see here, our kindergarten through second grade and third through fifth grade students performed within the eighties. When we look at percent of students who fell within the tier one range based on the iReady criteria and a dip in sixth through eighth grade. And again, you see on the bottom row, the percentage of students who would benefit from getting some additional support and instruction. One of the great features about iReady is the ability for students to take the test multiple times so we can track the growth. What you're seeing on this chart here is a year-over-year comparison, a partial year-over-year comparison for our K-five students. Many of our K-five students participated in iReady testing in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. However, due to the pandemic, they were not able to take their final assessment in the spring. The goal is for the top line, the green line representing tier one to increase throughout the year. What you're seeing here is proficiency over time towards meeting or exceeding end-of-year expectations. So the goal is for our tier one student range to increase while our tier two and tier three student ranges should ideally decrease over the course of the school year. And that is a pattern that we're seeing here when we look especially at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. When we look at our district-wide K through eleven math performance in iReady, we see a similar percentage as our reading diagnostic for students who may benefit from tier three intensive interventions in math. And eighty-seven percent of our students fell into the tier one and tier two instructional range. Again, when we look at comparative data across the state of California as well as the national level, Laguna Beach Unified students continue to have fewer students needing those intensive tier three supports as compared to students across the state and across our nation. We're seeing similar progressions when we look through our fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. This is where we see an increase in the numbers of students who may benefit from getting those tier three interventions. Again, keeping in mind the rigor of the test and the complexity of the tasks as students progress throughout the grade levels. Nonetheless, fewer students continue to be identified as potential tier three students when compared to the state and national level. And finally, when looking at our math data in terms of our tier one and tier two students across the various grade bands, again, we are seeing here, when we get to our middle school level, that more students are requiring additional support. So this, this data is being used as one of the driving tools and factors when our school teams are designing what their intervention and multi-tiered systems of support should look like based on their school context and the unique needs of their students.
And just to add to this, another good example of that, of the tier two support they might get. Yes, it could be small groups, but also it's sometimes it's defined as the frequency of support, right? So you may have a student that teacher works closely with three times a week to give additional support during class. And another student that they're only working with two times or five times, right? So giving them that extra support built within the class level. And then I also just, I did also wanted to add on to this, to what Dr. Canenberg said. When you're looking at that tier three percentage of students, if it's near that ten percent range, right? You're looking about an elementary class, to give some context, you're looking about two or three students. At a middle or high school class, that might be three or four or five, it's really large. But so those are the students that are really giving that more intense intervention beyond just the classroom. This next slide shows the student grade distribution across the last three years, including Virtual Academy there, that's the VA. So here at the high school, and I did want to point out one thing before we talk about twenty twenty-one, that little aqua blue there that's in nineteen twenty. That is, those are the grades that were given during the spring of twenty twenty, the beginning of the pandemic, where we allowed students to do a pass fail or no grade on that. So that's, that was a little bit larger that year. But if you look at twenty twenty-one, we did see improvement of grades at the high school level. And then a little bit of a decrease at the Virtual Academy, speaking to the challenge of doing some very rigorous courses online. And doing, yeah, obviously one model, they were doing two at a time, another model they're doing six at a time, creating a certain challenge for our high school students especially. At the middle school level, the, the grades in the trimester model were very similar to the previous years, actually almost, almost identical. And then Virtual Academy actually a little bit of increase in the number of Bs and Cs together combined. Another set of data that we often look at and talk about in communities, AP exam scores, sometimes SAT and ACT. In this case, last year we had two hundred and twenty-eight students that tested. This was a decrease from the previous years as well as the number, the number of tests that were taken. And I think you all, we all can imagine, you know, being a student, going through everything that went through last year, all those different things that were shared on that, one of those first slides. And having to make a decision is just something I would feel like I'm ready for, right? And so, so that was, that was seen everywhere. I will say, when we looked at previous data, this like two hundred and eighty-eight students that tested, that's actually still more than seven, the number we had in twenty seventeen, eighteen and all the years prior. So we had an increase the last couple of years and then it did go down last year and the two years ago as well and twenty twenty. And then again, at the top, that shows the graduates, that was on that, one of those first slides around that sixty-three percent that continued to increase. And twenty seventeen, that was actually a little bit less than half. Now we're almost at two-thirds of students. And also we'll share a couple of slides up, some additional data we look at around college and career readiness. That is one important data point, but there's a lot of other ones that we look, do look at. This one here has a several, several series of data points that we think are really valuable. I think ideally we want students to take a very college-level rigorous course when they're in high school to see what they're ready for, to do something that they're maybe passionate about. So you'll look here and you have a hundred and thirty-one enroll, dual enrollments that we had, those were with our IVC, the summer, fall and winter. Or summer, summer, fall and spring. And then we had a hundred and twenty-two enrollments in concurrent college courses. So those are courses that students are taking outside of us. They're actually going, they're going to the college or we're doing it online at IVC, Saddleback, Golden West, I think there's a few others. You have, you also had a hundred and fifty-five students, a hundred and fifty-five enrollments in CTE articulated college courses. These are courses that are career tech education courses where our teacher has connected with the teacher at a college, most of ours are through Saddleback College. And they will see that is this course equivalent? And the college, the college professor determines, yes, this is equivalent to the course I'm giving, therefore you can get college credit for taking this high school course. We had seven hundred and forty AP course enrollments, which we know is a very rigorous course as well. We had two hundred and eighty-four CTE enrollments, just in general with a high, that could consider high quality. There's a couple of different factors for that. We mentioned earlier, we had forty-four students that completed a pathway. And then we had a hundred and twenty-six students that were in a work-based participation or learning experience. So some of the, just kind of in summary and looking at a lot of those, those, these data points is around academic achievement. Which you'll see is our class, I mentioned earlier, class of twenty twenty-one met or exceeded the overall academic achievement of our prior classes. Students who are mainly tier three intensive intervention was significantly less than the state or national averages. However, students who may need tier two as a small group actually did increase. And so grades, especially in grades five through eight, showed the greatest need for that additional support. The percent of students receiving Ds and Fs remained below ten percent combined, which was significantly fewer than most other schools. I think we all heard, you know, different, at different times of the year, talking about some districts having just a huge significant number, thirty, forty percent of their kids getting Fs. There were fewer As and Bs and the high school level for Virtual Academy than the regular LBHS academic model. And then the number of students taking equivalent coursework in those several different ways actually increased during the pandemic year. So we'll take, I always want to take a second to pause there before we go on to the data connected to our second goal, see if there's any questions at this time.
See, I kind of asked this before, I see that we had two hundred and twenty-eight AP students that took the test. How many were in AP classes altogether?
Let me see if I have that.
How many were in classes and chose not to take the test?
Typical, a typical year, we, about ninety percent of the students will take the AP exam that are in a class. I know that was less this year, it definitely dropped. I don't have that, is that, I don't think others that percentages are for me, but it did drop, it wasn't at ninety percent. The classes, when we were looking at that piece, the classes that had this most significant drop from the previous year and the percent of students that took it. And I want to be careful saying numbers because class sizes are all a little bit different, right? But, but the percents that dropped are actually your classes. But, but the percents that dropped are actually your classes that were primary senior classes, of AP classes. So some of our ones that are like, you know, English or, or economics, like where there was seniors there at the end of their four years, had a larger percentage that chose not to take that exam.
I, and I understand it was such a tough year, why more students would choose not to, but I'd still like to know how many it was.
Okay, I'll, I can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I just had a question too about the, I, I understand that of course the complexity increases as students go up in grades. But why do you think there are more students needing help? Because it's, you know, the students have the background, it looks like before, and then all of a sudden they're needing help. And I really appreciate the I Ready because it is targeting where students need help, and it's really, much easier than to support them. But what's happening there is the test, is, is the test accurate for what students need at, say, fifth grade level or seventh grade level?
So what, what I would say is, one, that pattern does, is a similar pattern, you would see an S back or the CASP, right? If you look at those scores, you know, with our district, across the county, across the state, you tend to see the proficiency level go, get lower as kids get older. There's a lot of different factors into that, it certainly, it certainly can be the complexity of the course and the rigor. As I think we all know, kids are at the middle school level, there's a lot of different things going on in their life, you know, than at elementary level, let alone when you get to high school, right? And so that is a common trend you'll see anywhere where the, the scores tend to go down a little bit lower as time goes on. I think we're always trying to figure out how to, how do we keep those, keep, maintain those scores? But it's not, it's not something that's necessarily an anomaly for this assessment. One, a good example to think about around the academic side is something like math, right? So as time goes on, like you may be, you know, feeling being at a proficient level or just keeping up with grade level in third, fourth grade. But as more information gets added on, more complexity, different types of problem solving, like you're not just doing a one-step equation, you're now doing multi-step, and you're adding fractions, you're adding decimals. The weaker that foundation is, the harder it is as time goes by. And so that tends to be the typical reason, you know, the past around those state assessments where you see it drop. But we also know there's a lot of other factors that, you know, are different for kids at the elementary versus middle versus high school level.
It would affect if for the math also be if a student's having trouble reading, then it's hard to interpret sometimes what they're really asking in the math question?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, we, as you, as, as we, the grades go up, right? There's a lot more language, there's a lot more terminology, as, you know, thinking through some of the problems that you have at higher level math classes, right? That reading can often impact their understanding or their ability to do the, the problem solving piece of it, as they're working through that.
So the I Ready test would point that out, that it, if you see that a student is having a lot of trouble with a, you know, ones that involve more words, then it might not be that the student doesn't understand the math, it's the, the language part, and then you can work on the language part.
Yeah, so it, it does try to adjust to that. I will say that what's nice about this one is, as it, it's adaptable. So as kids, if they start doing well, the questions get a little bit harder as it starts. As if they, if they don't do as well, the questions go a bit easier, there's less language in those questions. So it does adjust pretty well. So that is, that is a piece that they're trying to figure out ways to balance that, so we can get an accurate measure. And again, you know, this I Ready is one of several assessments that we do look at, right? So this, along with the ask, when we had S back, like, it's a part of us starting to like, okay, here's some students that we think we should be concerned about, some we may already know, some may be new to us. And then we, our teams go in there and look and see, is like, did the kid just have a really bad day on this one test, right? And you know, this wasn't their day, or is there something that we're starting to see this decreased understanding, and we need to provide additional interventions along the way?
It sounds like a great step.
Thank you. Other questions?
So when I already identifies a need, are there other assessments that are done? And Betsy, thank you for that presentation to us, the player. But are there other assessments that are done once I already identifies there's a need in reading or math? Or does, or is that the, that's the only assessment?
So there's a couple of different programs through I Ready that we can actually use, given that I Ready diagnostic data. So the first one is the students have access to actual personalized learning pathways, students in grade K eight. So it's an online program, similar to some of our other online programs. But their learning path is designed based on how they performed on the diagnostic assessment. So the software is adaptive and it knows those exact standards and skills that students need to develop proficiency in. So it's going to design their learning tasks, tasks accordingly, to make sure that they get that meaningful practice. And then, of course, we also have our classroom benchmark assessments that we use throughout the year, as well as our formative assessments that day-to-day check in with students. And of course, how students perform in the classroom on the tasks that they are asked to do by their teachers. So we always want to take into account multiple measures when measuring student performance and proficiency.
Thank you for that. And then chat on the college and career readiness. You might not have a percentage, but how many of our students are, you know, when we, when we look at that as a benchmark, how many are, take AP classes, college classes, CTE pathways, and by literacy, like is that, is there a, is there a representative of those students, or is it a small, do they kind of pick pathways, I guess is what I'm trying to know?
I don't have that number right now, but that's something that we've been looking at, trying to find the best way to collect that, because you're taking it from multiple data sets. And so, and this is actually, it's a metric that we, that we think we want to start emphasizing. It's not necessarily one that the state asks us to do, but I think similar to your, to what you're saying, is that this is a really important point, like this, this is, I mean, you could see, if you just look at the AP data alone, that's six, almost two thirds of the students, right? And then you have CTE data, you have college course, so you can kind of start adding on to that piece of how many students that might be, you know, probably somewhere in that range, as you get closer to seventy five, eighty percent is what I would estimate. But I don't want to say I know that for sure, because certainly kids take multiple ones as well.
Thank you. Any other questions in this section?
It was a very difficult year, and I just wondered if the teachers graded any differently during this period of time than they've done in the past. I know at the college level, I used to be able to look at data on how many As, Bs, Cs were given by a faculty member and, and, and the department, and be able to also then look at their evaluations and see if there's a correlation between high grades and high evaluations. And I don't know if you do anything like that at the, at the high school level, as far as looking at the number of As, the number of high grades that are given by individual faculty members or not.
Well, I mean, what I, what I can say, and I obviously, you don't, I know the grading and the practices of all the, you know, all of our teachers that we have. What I can say is, every teacher made adjustments last year, right? We moved to a different model, we had classes that were virtual, classes that were hybrid, classes where there was a camera in front of them, while some kids were in front of them, everybody made adjustments in how they taught, how they assessed. What I do know is that they all worked through what the essential standards were, right? And we've been working on our essential learning outcomes, as well as those common form of assessments across courses, and those stayed the same. So, you know, a lot of it, the work that they did last year was around prioritizing what was most important. So there was maybe some different emphasis on how they use their time that they have with the students. But the essential standards that they had all were the same as previously, so. But yes, I mean, certainly there were changes made and all adjusted in many ways last year.
Thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Dr. Mayberry, for the really detailed information. I think my general comment on this is, it seems like the loss of our year-over-year CASP scores, since we weren't able to administer those tests at a state level, is actually a gain in what I already is providing us. It seems like from what you guys have described, we have an actual diagnostic tool that we can use, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, and take action on with our students. And so while I initially was disappointed that because of the, the loss of the state test that nobody could administer, that we wouldn't have these year-over-year trends. And I think, you know, anybody that looks through pages of numbers is always looking for year-over-year trends. And so that's as a, you know, I think it's a normal reaction to want to know how did we do last year, how do we do this year, what's our projection for next year? But what I'm realizing is that we really gained this program that allows us to really help our students grow academically. And I'm really thankful for that. My question is, is I Ready going to come nine through twelve in the future? Because it seems like most of what we have is K eight for I Ready, now that I've applauded the benefits of I Ready.
Thank you. I just want to echo, I think, you know, obviously in challenging times or chaos, right? Opportunity can present itself, and there's certainly, despite all the challenges of last year, there were obviously some silver linings. So I appreciate you saying that. As far as the comparable, comparable data at the high school level, we're still waiting for, from I Ready. We had to twist our arm to get the comparable data at the K A level, but they're, that, they've had that assessment around longer. But I can say on our side, again, we've seen a lot of value to this. So I think the middle elementary is done taking the, already in math and ELA this year, or this first round of it. The middle school is starting this week, or next week. High school's going to be a little bit further down, and so we're using this again, that same way. And obviously, last year, this was just the spring, right? And we have, and so it's a tool that we've seen that value and want to continue to utilize it, support students and the teachers.
Okay, so we will, as a board, start to see I Ready data nine through twelve and future updates, or future years?
Yeah, I don't know if, we don't, right now, we're, we're tentatively not planning to give this to all eleventh and twelfth graders.
Okay.
A lot of the, the feedback we're getting, we get at the high school level, it's not as relevant at the eleventh and twelfth grade, I remember eleventh graders are tested the most, right? They're taking AP tests, they're going to take, this year, we're going to go, the state's going back to the S back, they'll take the S back. So we want to be careful that we're not overtesting them. And obviously, at the senior level, you know, there's a, what, you determine the value of doing it. We do anticipate we'll use it in certain spaces with certain kids and seeing, or if there is a concern about something, this is a tool that we have. But I wouldn't expect us to probably have any eleventh or twelfth grade data to share going forward, except for if there's little pockets of it that we use.
Okay, that, that helps, thank you. And then I, I guess that some of the takeaways that I, I see from here are a lot of, I think as other members of the board, Prince, pointed out, increasing numbers of students in tier three as we move through the grades. And we're so fortunate to be able to see that even by grade, to see if maybe there's a particular grade level that needs additional support or training, or help, or resources from the board. But the numbers all go up, right? We have more tier three students as we move through the grades. So we would expect that we have more or new or different interventions that are going to happen at the middle or early high school level. So I think that's what, as a board member, I'm looking forward to seeing and hearing about as we go through the year. Now that we have this data that is actionable and diagnostic and can lead us in some of our actions for the year, what those actions are going to be, I'm really excited to, to see that and hear about it. So thank you guys very much.
Yeah, I think one of the points that, when you look at the data and you start to see that, you know, that over time, that actually has always been the case, unfortunately. Jan probably remembers in D two, back in the, the back when we used to present the CST data. And as we moved to smarter balance, I used to joke that our students don't, they, they don't get, they don't lose their, their understanding of material as the age. But for some reason, the eleventh grade students, not you two, of course, but the eleventh grade students, because they become so overtested, we were seeing these huge dips. And this was statewide, you were just seeing this, this enormous drop, yet their ACT scores and their SAT scores showed they were exceeding. And what, what Chad's pointing out is you start to see this test fatigue. And students at the younger grades, especially the elementary, take the test very seriously. But as they start to age up, they start to not take the test as seriously, we're really saw it as more of a balance. Our goal and hope is, we can explain the value of these, of I Ready, because they'll see it more often. And that it's going to be potentially actionable, so that if you do test poorly, that, you know, ultimately, there's going to be follow-up to that. Right? Where they're going to say, hey, you know, you didn't do very well on this reading, let's, we're going to talk about that. And the student can either say, I admittedly didn't try. I have one of those in my house, who admittedly didn't try on the math test this last year. And, you know, or, or you're going to have, yes, you know, I worked really hard, and so then we can create the, the proper intervention, right? And I think that's the key, is you want to make sure that we're keeping the right intervention, the student, based off of actual data. And to your point, I Ready seems to be a way for us to do that in a much quicker and easier fashion than smarter balance, which is always getting the results the following year, right? And so, you know, we do get it quicker than we ever received test scores in the past, because we used to get, you know, CSTs in October. And it was, by that point in time, it was really pointless. But now we have some things that are actionable. So I, my hope is that as we start to utilize the data, we'll make sure that it is actually, you know, actionable and it's accurately reflecting our students and our student needs. The other part, I think, that we have to recognize too is, you know, we serve, we serve all students. So we have students that were, are on IEPs, that you start to see their needs, and they're in I Ready as well. So you'll see their results in about twelve to thirteen percent of our student population are on IEPs. They might not be able to keep up with the amount of work, but yet we still have, you know, their I Ready results in there. So we're, we have great interventions for those students as well, that are very much in the tier three area, right? They might have a, a, a specific learning disability that we're working to, to mitigate through other, other means. But again, we, we really are proud of the work that we're trying to get and, and move this in the right direction. And we've expanded our math intervention, our MTSS in math, using I Ready data as well. And we're, this, we're really excited to see how that will work this year, to continue to grow and support our students in mathematics. Again, recognizing, I think as member Perry pointed out, trying to determine, is it, and then ability for a student to read, that's getting in the way of the student's math ability, you know, attainment? Or is it really they have a math deficiency that we need to address? So again, that's always the key, making sure we plug the right intervention in, based off the need of the students.
I think that's a good segue to goal two, because that's, I Ready is creating testing that is meaningful to the students. The students want to be engaged with it, so they're not doing more work or work they don't want to be doing, so it's perfect.
Yes, thank you. So with, with goal two, around social emotional strength, social emotional competencies, I'm going to hand this off to Dr. Keller, but I think recognizing, I think that these are all interconnected, right? We know that the social emotional wellness of our students impacts their learning. And so we think that, you know, although these goals are separated, the data does impact.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry, and thank you, board. So I just want to start, like I start every meeting with the board by saying thank you. I, I mean, we're so fortunate to work in a district that prioritizes social emotional health with students as really an essential condition for learning. And last year was an extraordinary year, and our teachers were, and our staff members were at the frontline of establishing safe, secure relationships with our students. And I'm really excited to share some information with you, but I also want to recognize the individual student story is not always reflected in this group data. And so we did have students in distress, we did have families in distress. So, and so I want to, I want to balance the, some of the self-perception data that we have from students or stakeholders with, with the honoring the individual stories of, of some real difficulties last year. We're lucky enough to work in a place with a, with an incredible team of school counselors and school psychologists and social workers that provide more extraordinary services for students that need school-based mental health. And our teachers and staff, again, are on the front lines of doing that work. So just want to say thank you for the board's support in general. So I have some, I'm going to share some information from our challenge success surveys that we administered towards the end of May and early June to our students in the middle school and high school. It's the first time we administered the survey to middle school students, and it's the second time we've administered the survey to our high school students. The challenge success surveys is developed at a Stanford University, that's, it's, it's brought through their institutional review board. It's a valid and reliable assessment to measure a variety of different indicators. I'm going to share some just very general subsets of information here, but there's a really rich data set that our school principals and our challenge success teams at each school site review and disseminate to their teams to really think about the student experience and try to improve it. So the first one I'm going to share is in the upper left-hand corner, and what you see is, is seventy six percent of Laguna Beach high school students who felt that they have an adult at school they can turn to if they have a problem. That's a really important metric for us. Teachers were the number one staff member that students were endorsed being able to turn to, which is fantastic. We want every student, a hundred percent of students, to have an adult that they can turn to when they're struggling at school with a problem. And so that's an area for us to continue to work on. You can see there's some stability there from two thousand and nineteen, pre-pandemic. So, so even in these really difficult conditions, we were able to So so even in these really difficult conditions, we were able to maintain those student teacher relationships. The next, next two on the right hand side measured Laguna Beach High School and Thurston Middle Schools. Students were reporting back their perception of of teacher care and support. So that's a really important kind of safety, safety indicator. It's a really important trust indicator for us. So this is a scale of one to five, five being always. Three being sometimes, one would be never or not at all. And so you can see that in two thousand nineteen, the average score with all of our student respondents was three point six six. That improved to four point oh. Obviously, we'd like that to be a five. And similarly with Thurston Middle School, our initial baseline testing was surveying was a four point one. Down at the bottom, we have our student responding to an academic worry scale. There's a variety of different questions we ask around this, around student pressure, student experiences with academic stress. We want this number to be going down in the opposite direction. So so the average score for for the high school in two thousand nineteen was three point six. And academic stress and worry went down to three point three. It's almost in the neutral zone. Now, some stress is good, everybody. So I just want to make sure you know that. And it does motivate individuals to do well. Obviously, it's 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 this perception of a future outcome. So we want some level of interest and engagement, but we also want to balance that. We don't want students to be overly stressed with and and out of balance. And then the the two right indicators. So the student sense of belonging at school, that this Laguna Beach High School, the self reports rating has increased from an average score of three point five in two thousand nineteen to three point seven. We want every student to feel like they have a connection point at school, not only with an adult on school as a trusted resource. But they're that they're seen and valued and and connected with school. We want to continue to improve that. And then our baseline score at Thurston was a three point seven as well. One of the, one of the questions for the challenge success surveys that we administered to both Thurston and Laguna Beach High School was to have students indicate their three top words to describe their school. And both schools had these three top, top phrases or word sets, so high quality, fun, caring and welcoming. I do want to indicate that when we, when sound success administers this to over two hundred and fifty thousand students across the country. There's a similar schools pool for the high school of about twenty one thousand students. And the number one, one word or phrase that others similar schools put are difficult and stressful. So our students at Laguna Beach High School, that was their sixth highest indicated word or phrase to describe the school. So so, you know, again, we're trying to emphasize balance and well being with with this program and this participation. And I think that that the teacher and the work last year around the creative scheduling and and the work. To get to have smaller classes and direct connection with students really made a difference. And then we administer the the L cap survey, we're going to see some other, we we have an L cup stakeholder group. We survey in January of each year stakeholders, students, parents and and staff members. And one of the indicators that we wanted to share were that. So eighty percent of stakeholders, that includes all three of those stakeholder, all three of those groups, so students, staff and parents. Had positive or neutral feelings about students receiving effective social emotional supports. We always want to be more visible to students. We also want to work on stigma reduction for accessing supports at school. So we continue to push that work forward now and in the future. Ninety one percent of students, when they, on the L cap survey indicated that they have a positive or neutral feelings about opportunities for regular participation and engaging learning activities. With challenge success, we've, we we talked about engagement across three different areas, behavioral engagement, cognitive engagement and affective engagement. So that those emotional interest into the content. So so that's really positive reflection, but we want to continue to have students feel engaged in the coursework and that it's meaningful and impactful in their lives. And then eighty six percent of students had positive or neutral feelings about having at least one caring relationship with a staff member at school. I will note that it's not always the teachers or the counselors or the administrators that that teachers report. We have had really high ratings for custodial staff and other classified staff. So being visible and happy and positive in students' lives really makes a difference about student perceptions of caring at school. And then this slide shows some information about about our average daily attendance over the last, last three years. And our chronic absenteeism rate over the last three years. Many school districts across the country lost track of students as they entered into the pandemic and went into distance learning. And that is a tragedy, because when students are not connected to a positive school environment, like our students have the opportunity to be connected to. They really, obviously, the risk factors go through the roof. So we, you can see at the bottom row, that's the two thousand eighteen nineteen information. So ninety six percent average daily attendance with six percent chronic absenteeism. Obviously, we want chronic absenteeism, meaning you're absent for ten percent or more of your school day, school year. We want that to be zero, but so we continue to work on that. That's a goal for us. And we want to increase regular attendance. Now, we're still dealing with issues around, obviously, we have students that are in some areas of pandemic limitations with school. But we also really try to maximize student safety and student attendance in school. Okay, so this slide really summarizes some of the key highlights. So student perceptions of care and support and belonging improved over the last two years. And there's a similar percentage of students who were engaged in distance or hybrid learning last year in comparison to daily attendance in prior years. And then lastly, when we shifted to distance learning, we were, we did not have the similar challenges as other school districts in terms of finding and connecting with students. Open up to questions, comments.
I just want to say first that I just, I hope that everyone that is employed in the school district, like, is really proud of themselves. Because the connection between the academic side and the social emotional well being. And the flexibility, especially within the pandemic for our students. And this community to give back those three words. Should all be very proud of yourselves, all the teachers, everyone else, schools superintendent included.
I know you worked really hard. We've all worked really hard on those connections between staff members and the student and really emphasized that. And it appears that that has really come up and helped. We also know that the connection and being part of a group is really, really important for. Students' mental health that really helps us live longer in our lives. And I was wondering what kind of things are you doing? Or what's happening as far as building connections for groups of students? Not individ, not individual counseling, but groups. So they start feeling comfortable with other students and feel like they belong.
I I completely agree with you. I think like group, group identity and feeling comfortable and and seen, like I said, mentioned before. At every level, we have different activities that are in the developmentally appropriate range to try to include students who may otherwise be marginalized. Or not feel like that they are comfortable with engaging groups. I think our engagement with with Boys and Girls Club over the last eight years has really been helpful at the K eight level. And now we're exploring, you know, potentially exploring some additional services with them at the high school level to to do social facilitation. So anybody with with some needs in those areas, that would be one resource that is semi structured. I mean, there are, I mean, they have great staff members and really cool activities that they do at at the, at kind of the non academic times to engage students. That's one example amongst many, obviously, the high school clubs, there's a variety of different ways in middle, middle school. I know that there's lots of different ways to pull students in through through those types of activities. Sports athletics, I mean, there's, there's lots of ways to pull students in arts is really important. And and I mean, I know that you're a really big supporter in that area. So there are so many different ways to try to connect and touch students' lives and and to gain their interest with the nexus being the school environment. But really, we're trying to give them lifelong habits and skills and confidence to be able to carry that forward after they're done with us at high school.
Oh, I I agree. I mean, Boys and Girls Club has been amazing, a lot of different, different areas. But are we doing anything formally with either our counselors or S Rs that help students in groups?
Well, we have additional resources this year. We have peer mentor programs this year at the middle school and the high school. And we have, I I would love to list out all the different work we're doing. I think it would be exhaustive for you. I'd be, I'd be happy to put that together. We continue to reflect and add on different services to try to, I mean, again, I'm not satisfied with students feeling disconnected. If there's one percent of students feeling disconnected, that's that, that's a problem for me. So I have a moral imperative to engage kids and make them feel safe and connected with school. So so that's, that's how I look at it. And I'd be happy to share the additional, more exhaustive list at a later time. I can do it on a weekly for you.
I know, Mike, that you talked about sports and over sixty percent of our students play a sport. And I can't overestimate how that ties into group development. And I was just looking across the way at the women's volleyball and just really impressed with the the numbers, the enthusiasm. And I I think this district should be very, very impressed with what what we do with sports and how many of our students participate in sports.
Yeah, and I think not to be left off, but it was club drive day today, I believe, right? And so both of them can attest to the fact that I think we have anywhere between fifty to seventy clubs on our campuses. That are, you know, teacher facilitated in terms of they help sponsor that. But, you know, we're always trying to find a place for students to have a place to go and be a part of a group, so.
That's wonderful.
Dr. Keller, do we have plans to readminister the challenge sex sex, challenge success survey again in May? So we have some year over year data.
They actually advise the administer every two years, so they don't see a lot of sensitivity and changes every year. So so it would be up to the school sites on whether or not they would want to engage in those surveys. I would recommend that they do, but that's up to, that's up to them to do that. We also get a lot of really good data from our universal screening information, which I didn't share in this report. And and then our L cap survey is a lot more involved than what I shared here.
Okay, yeah, I think the data, as I think you pointed out really eloquently in the beginning of your presentation. Living through a pandemic, parenting during a pandemic, there was definitely moments where, you know. Students really were suffering in this area. So I think as a district and as a board member, to see that we really excelled in this area for our students for this year. Despite the fact that we could have lived through or parented through a really dark moment with our own children or a particular student. You know, speaks to the efforts of your your group. So thank you for the data and I hope we keep it up.
Oh, thank you.
We've tried to balance, because we have to give the healthy kid survey as well. So what we try to do is not have survey fatigue, like we can have testing fatigue. And so we do, we try to, we've been doing this nice and Dr. Keller, Dr. Mayberry have come up with a survey. We have a full survey calendar that we have put together so that we're not trying to inundate the students. Actually, we see some great feedback today that to remind the students when they take the survey, how we use that data. Because I think it's an important piece that is really meaningful for us. But so we've been trying to do healthy kids every other year, which we are required to do for different grant purposes. And then when we don't do the healthy kids survey, we are trying to think about continuing to do the challenge success survey. Because that gives us every other year for both of those surveys, which we believe creates a nice valid data set for us.
Just wanted to recognize, it was shared with us a few times last year. That the leadership students at both the high school and Thurston were trying to put activities together and have things for students, group type activities virtually. I mean, they really, some of those were shared with us and they were very enthusiastic and our, I know our board reps also shared that, the activities that were going on. Which is is really a difficult thing to do when they couldn't get together. So I mean, it's, I think you should really be. Able to recognize that the numbers stayed up in spite of that. So and I think we had a lot, in this community, we have a lot of parent support. And parents will reach out to for assistance with their students. When you said we didn't have the trouble that other districts had with, you know, connecting with students. So it's, that's a benefit to us. But thank you for the, for the information. And Mike, thank you for validating and separating the individual stories from overall data. Very therapist thing to do is awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we, I mean, we know, yeah, yes, we know that there's, there's stories that are really important and they're ongoing. So we continue to do that work and we've seen, we're still in a transition period and it's going to be, it's going to take a lot of work. On the students' part, parents' part, our part, so I appreciate the community's partnership, so.
Thank you. So so we'll move here to our last, our last call and. Around having safe, inclusive, equitable learning environment or school and school cultures. There we go. And again, recognizing, as you said, like the individual stories and, you know, like, you know, as a whole, we're looking at very summative data, right? And it's good to see that our kids are progressing, right? Albeit maybe not at the same they were previously. But we, overall, kids are moving forward and progressing. But knowing that there are, there's a lot of work to do on our part and on everyone's part. And so you'll see some of that reflected in this. These next couple of slides. This was the, this first one here, just around student safety, around students who had positive or neutral feelings. Around feeling safe or having a positive learning environment. Nearly all of our students felt that way last year. And this, this was the L cap survey was getting in the middle of the year around January, which we know is, you know, multiple learning environments going on at that time. And the next couple of slides will look at some of our student populations. That we, that we look at. So like this case, we're looking at students who are English learners that may need tier three interventions. But it's about a quarter of them, you know, we, that's typically our population of English learners is about two to three percent of our students, depending on the year. You know, obviously, this, you know, considering a different virtual layer, learning a new language. Doing that virtually, doing that a hybrid, doing that through video, through Zoom is obviously has a lot of challenges, right? And so what was one couple of positive data points to show is that, you know, we did, we have students last year take the summit of LPAC, which is the shows proficiency and English learning. And about a third of the students were able to increase their levels on that, about half state. And obviously, some actually went and got worse. But we did have about fifteen or sixteen students, which about twenty percent of our students reclassify as under fluent English proficient. So so we had kids that could continue to learn the language and move forward, even despite of all the challenges that would be an English learner during this time. Next one looks at, again, you'll look at this, this is our students with disabilities who may need two, three interventions. Certainly, you know, this is something that we're aware of and by nature of of having an individual education plan. You know, there's certainly going to be additional supports or interventions that we're already providing. So this, this shows that need for those students having, you know, definitely a big impact on that, on this student population during the pandemic. A couple, again, a couple of positive points to share with that. And I, you know, some of this has been brought up here that we are, you know, this may seem like just a simple data point that a hundred percent of our students were able to get their assessments and able to get their services. But that's not true in a lot of other districts. A lot of our districts are playing catch up right now and trying to figure out how to, we can get these services, how to do, catch up on different things. Some assessments are missing. So our team, you know, that really started that summer of two thousand twenty. And there was this white, you know, worked hard at the, with the high school team to open up a assessment center in the middle of summer, right? There was a lot of precautions going through, because like nothing had really opened up at that point. So you had a lot of work to get some of that done during the summer and get and and to stay up. And and even looking at this, this information, you can see that. This learning center was another one that we opened up in the fall of last year, right? Ninety five percent, you know, this was students that had the strongest needs. It wasn't just actually students with disabilities. We had some English learners in there, other students that had challenges, but ninety five percent of those students passed all their classes. And so we were able to bring them on and get them some adult sport on campus when other kids were not on campus. And we even had twenty three students with disabilities or exited from special education last year during the pandemic. So they were making progress enough to be exited. Next slide shows the. uh students who are economically disadvantaged uh within our community. Again, this is, this is typically around ten or eleven percent of our students. So this had, you know, shows the need that they have often sometimes, sometimes around resources, sometimes around support, uh sometimes around access. But the, you know, being in a pandemic with, you know, we're potentially, there's some uh deficiency in resources or needs and resources beyond. Um, they're certainly going to have a larger impact uh on them. So um and this speaks to really a lot of that work that we're doing around the MTSS. Um, you know, and I put this up here, this is one of the models we've developed with our, you know, leaders. Um, you know, we really, really speak about it a lot here at the board meetings and it's something that we're spending a lot of resources and time in around finding that system of support. What, you know, that includes having multiple assessments, trying different assessments out like I ready, uh but having very targeted interventions that need the individual needs of students. Uh, and that's includes summer. We've talked about summer here. Like, we had a lot of kids come in the summer and you can get additional support in different ways. And some got enrichment, some got intervention. So uh some had needed credit recovery. So that's why we really put a lot of time, resource, and I'm thankful, um, again, like Dr. Keller said, to be, you know, a community, a school board that supports that work um and that additional, those additional resources and, you know, and this is fall and we've got, you know, uh our team was over at Almaral today looking at some of the different interventions they're doing with that increase in staff that we've done around intervention and seeing kids shuffle and move around during the day to get the right, you know, the right amount, the right scoop of support, the right scoop of intervention that they need for them. So uh this is really a lot of our work and I wanted to just to share that uh before we wrap up. Um, and then again, um, just looking at, you know, a lot of this information uh around interventions, what you'll see here. You know, nearly all our students, um, you know, have positive or neutral, positive or neutral perceptions around the learning environment, feeling safe. Uh, students continue to receive their specialized uh and personalized services during this pandemic. Uh, students who are English learners, have disabilities or socially economically disadvantaged, continue to need the most support. The on campus learning center uh model helps students who had significant challenges to pass their classes. Uh, and then some students have made enough progress to even be exited in special education or reclassified as fluent as English learners. So um, that's the kind of, to wrap up that piece, the last um was to kind of wrap up this slide here, um, if you can see in the handout, but obviously a little bit small up here to see. Just speaks to some of the work that we're doing within those three goals this year. Uh, we'll continue to share more information on this, and this is all, all this, and this, these different groupings are also in our LCAP. You know, that we all discussed and worked on and 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 approved last spring. Um, but you'll see multi tiers of systems of support um in college career readiness and our social emotional support. Uh, looking at extended learning opportunities, really expanding after school sport, uh looking at uh how can we help kids take more college classes? Uh, we're looking at early learning programs and worries that may be expanded, continuing the work around career education, uh that's been a strong emphasis. Our mental health support services, increasing the the staffing and support there in that area. Uh, continuing to build student agencies so they have ownership and and for themselves and empowered uh would have that that voice and choice piece. Uh, and then obviously, always making sure students are safe, have access to resources. Uh, and then again, um, looking at different ways to engage parents uh as part of the process. And we mentioned this previous board meetings, just, you know, it was, it was different last year and, you know, not having the volunteers on campus and, you know, and it's, it's, we're still not there. That's a big, that's one big part of parent engagement involvement. And and so um we're want to continue to look at ways that we can, um, you know, improve that and how to, and you use that as, as, as our partners. So with that, that is uh kind of the end of our, our presentation. As I'll, so open this up to questions here on this last section or overall and any, any of the information that was shared.
I want to congratulate you on a well done presentation, the team that put it together did an exceptional job. The students who took all the tests uh did a fabulous job. The administration, the teachers and the faculty, the coaches, the librarians have done an exceptional job during this COVID, uh COVID year. My one small point I might suggest to make the data better would be on these last sides uh concerning students with English learning and uh disabled and socially, I might put the number of students that we're talking about because I'm sure they're small numbers and you're putting the percentage, just uh, I mean, it was really nice that the, we had the one twenty three students, but uh it would have been helpful for me to know just what the sheer numbers are. Thank you.
Any other comments, question? And thank you again to the dedication of all the employees. Thank you to the love of data in your group to do the dive and create a governance level presentation for us that to help guide our decision making that we need to. Really appreciate it and um and um not in minimizing goal three. I I I guess maybe, maybe the numbers would do it, just kind of knowing a little more volume around those students, a little more or not individual stories, can't get that, but a little more information in that area would be helpful. Okay, and I think that's it. Let me lose this. Thank you, everyone, for being here as well. So that our next regular meeting is Thursday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty one. You can have a motion a second to adjourn the meeting?
Some second.
Victoria, can you recall that? I could just say all in favor? All in favor? I the meeting is adjourned at eight forty seven. Thank you, Jason.